Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the council meeting of Monday, November 7th, 2016. We'll start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Estes.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Modric.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And now we'll lead off with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. The invocation tonight will be by Scott Wiley. And for both of these items, you're invited to participate but not required.
Father God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for our great city that we get to live in, in this great land. And we thank you for this city council and this mayor. We pray, Father, for your grace, for your wisdom, for your guidance, for clarity, for discernment, for unity, for a spirit of collegiality as our leaders and as our citizens take our city forward. We thank you, Father, for every good and perfect gift that comes from above. We pray it in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now we'll have the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have changes to the agenda, or may I have a motion, please? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Brad Estes. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, we're gonna come down front for an award.
cities to go the extra mile. The work is inspired by the belief that going the extra mile opens doors to new possibilities. Going the extra mile improves the results we find in life, both professionally and personally. Going the extra mile allows us to make a difference in our community and in our world. November 1st was Extra Mile Day. That day recognizes the capacity which we have to create positive change in ourselves, our families, our organizations, and our communities when we go the extra mile. It's a day to celebrate individuals and organizations in local communities that go the extra mile in order to make a difference. It is also a day to renew our commitment to going the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. So we were contacted by the Extra Mile Organization. We agreed to participate, so this year over 550 cities are participating in the Extra Mile Award program. And so we had some nominations. And I'd like to call up Gloria Plummer, Director of the Career Learning Center in Rapid City. Hear Gloria? And I'll ask Gloria to say a few words about her nomination.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it is an honor to be here this evening and have the opportunity to recognize one of our long-term staff who has gone the extra mile in everything that she does. So she was a little surprised tonight when she turned around and saw all of us here to honor her this evening. But at this time, I would like us to honor Priscilla Noble, who is the extra mile.
I have something to read here. It's an executive proclamation from the mayor's office. Whereas the city of Rapid City acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Rapid City chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Rapid City has chosen to honor Priscilla Noble for her ability not only to provide customers of the Career Learning Center with skills to re-enter the workforce, but also to give them renewed hope, confidence, and spirit. And whereas Priscilla has been with the Career Learning Center since 1995, her director states that Priscilla is one in a million, and she will never be able to replace her. It's a good time to ask for a raise right now. Fellow staff members say Priscilla sees every client walking through the door as wonderful. In fact, I understand she takes a little bit of a ribbing about that at the center. And she will seek out and find the good in each and every client. And whereas Priscilla will work with participants ranging from seventeen to seventy, some may need a GED while others have advanced degrees, some may have no work history while others may have been employed for forty years, Priscilla has the ability to create a feeling of support and confidence with anyone. And whereas throughout Priscilla's twenty-one years of employment with the Career Learning Center, she has continually demonstrated going the extra mile. In addition to working at the Career Learning Center for seven years, she helped men and women retiring from our... I'm sorry. For seven years, she helped men and women retiring from our military transition back to civilian work and assisted the Department of Labor in providing their customers with job skills. And whereas Priscilla currently partners with community agencies to provide clients the best resources possible and brings in clothes and personal items that have been gathered from donations so that people applying for jobs would be able to prepare for interviews. Priscilla is very deserving of this award and is considered an extra-mile hero. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim November 7th, 2016, as Priscilla Noble Day in Rapid City. And encourage each individual in our community to take time on this day to go the extra mile in his or her own life and to acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Priscilla Noble, congratulations, and thank you for your service.
I dream a lot, you know? But I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for all of you. And that's the truth. And I'm so grateful, so grateful to all of you for being in my life. And you made this happen, not me. So I love you all, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your... Gloria, come back up.
She's coming.
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, everyone, and we're gonna continue with the council meeting now, just to let you decide if you're in the right place or not. The next on the agenda, we have a need for an executive session to consult with legal Can I have a motion to come out of executive session? counsel regarding proposed or pending litigation pursuant to South Dakota Codify Law 1-25-2, Amanda Scott?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Steve Laurenti. Okay, the next item on the agenda is staff direction related to executive session. subsection 3. We have a motion by someone? Brad Estes?
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay, we have a motion by Estes and a second by Laurenti to go into executive session. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, we're in executive session, folks. We'll go to Steve Laurenti. We'll be back in just a few minutes, hopefully.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to take action to secure community block grant funds regarding city interest in loans made by the Teton Coalition.
Second. Okay, we have a second by Jerry Wright. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Another motion from executive session. Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask our city attorney, Joel Adine, to phrase this next motion, because it's pretty complicated.
Okay. Thank you. The motion we need is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a settlement agreement with Doyle Estes and other parties regarding Big Sky Phases 5 through 10 and the Big Sky Business Park, and in the amount of $250,000, and approve it with indemnity and release language that's satisfactory to the city's legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott and a second by Wright. Now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need abstain from this vote, please.
Okay. All in favor of the motion previously stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, we're in executive session, folks. We'll be back in just a few minutes, hopefully. We are back from executive session. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session? Amanda Scott?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Steve Laurenti. Okay, the next item on the agenda is staff direction related to executive session. We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to take action to secure community block grant funds regarding city interest in loans made by the Teton Coalition.
Second. Okay, we have a second by Jerry Wright. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Another motion from executive session. Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask our city attorney, Joel Adine, to phrase this next motion, because it's pretty complicated.
Okay. Thank you. The motion we need is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a settlement agreement with Doyle Estes and other parties regarding Big Sky Phases 5 through 10 and the Big Sky Business Park, and in the amount of $250,000, and approve it with indemnity and release language that's satisfactory to the city's legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott and a second by Wright. Now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need abstain from this vote, please.
Okay. All in favor of the motion previously stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, we have a motion by Scott and a second by Wright. Now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to abstain from this vote, please.
Okay. All in favor of the motion previously stated, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, we have a second by Jerry Wright. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Another motion from executive session. Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask our city attorney, Joel Adine, to phrase this next motion, because it's pretty complicated.
Okay. Thank you. The motion we need is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a settlement agreement with Doyle Estes and other parties regarding Big Sky Phases 5 through 10 and the Big Sky Business Park, and in the amount of $250,000, and approve it with indemnity and release language that's satisfactory to the city's legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott and a second by Wright. Now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to abstain from this vote, please.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Another motion from executive session. Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask our city attorney, Joel Adine, to phrase this next motion, because it's pretty complicated.
Okay. Thank you. The motion we need is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a settlement agreement with Doyle Estes and other parties regarding Big Sky Phases 5 through 10 and the Big Sky Business Park, and in the amount of $250,000, and approve it with indemnity and release language that's satisfactory to the city's legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott and a second by Wright. Now we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to abstain from this vote, please.
Okay. All in favor of the motion previously stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries with one abstention. And now, we're on to general public comment. There are no speaker request forms, so we'll go on to the next item, which is the non-public hearing items, items two through 148. There are no speaker requests on those, so we'll go straight to consent items, items two through 54. The agenda says two through 50, but it's actually two through 54. Would the council like to pull any of the items off of consent? Go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove items 25 and 27.
25 and 27?
Yes.
Jerry Wright.
52, please.
Okay, are there any others? Brad Estes.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar last items 25, 27, and 52.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Steve Laurenti. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we'll go to item 25, which is to authorize staff to purchase a slow-speed grinder for the solid waste material recovery facility utilizing the specification and bids from city of Gering, Nebraska, August 18th, 2016, in the amount of $709,875. We'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for Carl Murbach, please.
Okay.
And just for your information, we discussed this in length at the Public Works last week, and so I just have a couple of follow-up questions for Carl.
Good evening, Carl Murbach, Superintendent of the Rapid City Solid Waste Division.
Thank you, Carl. One of the things that I wanted to know more about this particular item that we're buying, because it's a pretty spendy piece, for those of you that are listening in, this is a... it's a slow-speed grinder that'll cost approximately $709,000. One of the things I've heard about this piece is that it is movable, so in an event like Storm Atlas, we could move this around to different places and help get rid of some of the bigger pieces that we need to grind up. Is that correct?
Yes, it will be a portable unit. It is not going to be a fixed or runoff electricity. It is a diesel unit on tracks that we will be able to move not only around our facility and within the material recovery facility, but in the event of an emergency, again, such as Storm Atlas, we would have that ability to... have that flexibility to take that where we need to go with it.
I really thought that was a great addition, you know, with this piece of equipment. And also, you know, since shingles is kind of on everyone's mind as of late with the landfill, this takes care of shingle grinding, or is it not that kind of thing? Or what's the deal with the shingles?
Not necessarily that type of thing. One of the areas that we do have, and I'll follow up a little bit later with a report on this, there is an alternative locations for shingles. One of the places is Hills Material, that they will take those shingles directly, grind those, and recycle that material into asphalt. With the oil prices that have changed a little bit, it isn't... their value isn't there as much for recycling, but we are always looking for that. But it is something that could be used on a number of materials. Our primary goal with this grinder is to be able to reduce the volume of bulky material. If you take a mattress, a couch, a large chair, you can run that over many, many times, and it just springs right back. You can't destroy those very easily. By grinding that up, bringing it down to a small volume, we will be able to get better compaction in the landfill and save airspace, which is our goal with this unit.
Okay. And yeah, that's great information to have as well, and just the information on recycling the shingles is also good information for the public, so I thank you on that, and I hope that everybody's buying good enough mattresses to really actually need this type of thing eventually. So thank you very much for your time, Carl. That's it.
Okay, we have no motion on item 25.
No.
Okay, we have a motion by Jerry Wright and a second by Jason Solomon. All in favor of approval of item 25, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. On to item number 27, which is to authorize staff to advertise for bids for equipment rental rates for snow removal operations, estimated cost $50,000. And we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor, and a move to approve?
There are a motion and a second to approve by Steve Laurenti.
Thank you. I just have a question for staff, and I'm not exactly sure which staff I'd go to on this particular question. Is it Dale? Dale. It... when I read this, you know, in the agenda, it was like advertise bids for stuff, you know? It just really didn't say anything, equipment rental rates for snow removal operations, and it didn't really give me any more information than that. It's $50,000. I know that's not a lot of money in city world, but to me, it's a sizable sum. I'd like to know what it's actually going for, the bids are going for.
During our larger snow events, we hire outside contractors when our crews are busy doing mainline snow plowing, for instance, in the downtown area. We have to truck that snow out of there. So it is... if we have a significant snow event, our crews are out treating streets all over town, we can't dedicate the time to be downtown removing that snow, so we typically hire a contractor, and that's what this is for, is to hire both personnel and equipment to be able to truck that snow out of the downtown area.
Okay, I guess I didn't really understand. That was a personal... a personnel kind of a cost, or a contract kind of cost. So that's all I needed to know, and I will just... I yield. Thank you.
Okay, now to Jerry Wright.
Well, more historical perspective, they also use the hired contractors to assist the neighborhoods when we have an extremely heavy snow, and we simply don't have enough machinery to open up the entire community, so it's backup, and we just don't have enough equipment to handle it all at one time. It's very money well spent. Thank you.
I didn't know if it was shovels, or salt, what's going on here? So that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor... motion on the floors for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we'll go on to item number 52, which is to acknowledge report from staff on cemetery monuments realignment project. And we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked Parks and Rec staff to present this this evening. I think it's such a good thing that has happened. As you know, that was funded by gifts from two families in Rapid City, and I asked the staff to bring a report to us, and I'll let Lon do that, and if you may have comments afterwards. Mr. Van Dusen, please.
Thank you, Alderman Wright, Mayor, council members, Lon Van Dusen, Parks Division Manager for the city of Rapid City. Included a summary of where we're at with the headstone monument straightening and realignment project. Our initial budget, which was all donations, as Alderman Wright mentioned, we had some benefactors that were very generous to us. The project probably would not be accomplished without their willingness and their generosity to donate the money. Most of this work has been done in the older sections of the cemetery where perhaps there is not a family that's identifiable anymore, that's going to step forward and take care of the cemetery. The cemetery is our legacy and represents our past, and we certainly appreciate their generosity in making the cemetery a better place and making a better place for people to come visit their loved ones. We've completed four phases of work, and the initial budget was $37,550, which was all donations. We have a balance right now of approximately $10,765, which, based on an average of the work we've done so far, would probably allow us to repair and straighten anywhere from 50 to 70 additional markers in the cemetery. We'll work on a list this fall and be prepared to award a contract at the beginning of the year to a monument company to take care of that work. So I would entertain any questions from the council at this time?
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge, but I'd like to have the floor if there's a second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Wright and a second by Steve Laurenti.
I did send a copy of this report to the benefactors that donated, and I haven't heard from them, but I just wanted to bring this to the council for your attention. You know that the department did a good job in getting this done, and accountability was well done. And I was out there a couple weeks ago, we toured the remaining portions of the landfill... excuse me, cemetery. My old heart. And like Lon said, we'll get 40 or 50 more repaired, and I think the facility's gonna be a lot better shape than it was. And I encourage us to discuss future maintenance on the cemetery in our budgets in 2017, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floors for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Lon. Now on to non-consent items. There are no speaker requests on these items, and so we'll start off with city ordinances. Item number 55, and we'll go to John Roberts, our Chair of the Legal Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 55, first reading ordinance 6147, an ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number four for 2016, and I recommend approval.
Okay, second by Jerry Wright. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 56, first reading ordinance 6146, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by FMG Incorporated for Holiday Station Stores Incorporated for rezoning from low-density residential district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located northwest of East Highway 44 and Elkvale Drive, and I recommend approval.
Second by Jerry Wright. And let's go to Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want a clarification on this. We've got some links attached to this particular item that may be ahead of itself, so I just would like to bring that forward to Attorney Joel and have him clarify what we're actually voting on.
Okay, Joel Adine.
Thank you, Mayor. That is correct. Alderman Modric brought to my attention that the items linked were related. It's a related item. It's a plan development designation for the proposed store, and it involves an exception to a sign for the store. That is actually on the planning commission meeting this Thursday, so it does not appear the links are correct. So if you approve this at first reading, you are not approving the signed exception or the plan development. Because this is an ordinance and requires two readings, I think you can approve first reading tonight, understanding that you're only approving the rezoning request, and that planning will then correct the link prior to the second reading. But I just wanted to make clear that you are not approving the exception or the plan development tonight.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll support that effort, but however, I do have a problem with this signage exception, and there's several points within that, so...
That is not on the agenda tonight, so I would discourage you from discussing it.
Thank you. I'll take that advice. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor is for approval of item number 56. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll go back to Alderman Roberts on item 57.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 57, approved resolution number 2016-079, creation of budget analysis position, and I recommend that we continue this to November 16, 2016, legal and finance meeting.
Second.
Second by Steve Lorenti. Go to... All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to Community Planning and Development Services Department items, and we'll go to our Public Works Chair, Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 58 is a request by Fisk Land Serving and Consulting Engineers, Inc. for Pamela P. Phillips for preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at 2465 Covington Street. I recommend approval with stipulations. I make a motion to that effect. Thank you.
Okay, motion by Brad Estes. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number 59 is a request by Runner Associates, LLC for HDRK Properties, LLC for preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located lying east of Luna Avenue, and make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Second by Jason Solomon. I'll go to Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. On that particular item, I was following it, and I believe staff wanted a change on the non-access and access, and there was quite a bit of discussion on that through planning, and I just need to verify where we were at on that to understand what our vote is tonight, if I could.
Would you like to ask Dale Teck a question? Okay.
I'm going to have to ask for clarification. Which item are you speaking to?
Item 59.
I believe what you're referring to was a non-access easement adjacent to access easement on an adjoining property. I believe that exception has been approved, so that item has been addressed.
Can I answer the question? Okay, the motion for item number 59 is to approve with stipulations. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item?
Item number 60 is a request by FMG, Inc. for ARM Land, LLC for preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located north of Omaha Street between Waterloo Street and Racine Street, and I recommend, I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Second by Jason Solomon. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item?
Item number 61 is a request by KTM Design Solutions, Inc. for Rapid Center, LLC for preliminary subdivision plan for property east of East Mall Drive Commercial Park generally described as being located southeast of the intersection of Mall Drive and Dias Avenue. Make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Amanda Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item?
And item number 62 is a request by KTM Design Solutions, Inc. for ProMark Services, Inc. for preliminary subdivision plan for an area in Marlin Industrial Park generally described as being located in the northeast quadrant of Creek Drive and Marlin Drive intersection, and I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Second by Amanda Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we go on to alcohol beverage license applications, which are items 63 through 148. Prior to this meeting, I met with Chief of Police Carl Jaggers about these items. He says there are none of these items that are in question or are in need of any individual discussion, so we could entertain, if you wish, a motion to handle all these at once. Brad Estes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve items 63 through 148, less item 73. I have a financial interest in it, I'd like to have that recognized separately.
Second.
Okay, second by Steve Lorenti. So the motion is for approval of items 63 through 148, with the exception of 73. Amanda Scott?
Sorry, Mayor, I was going to make the second motion.
Okay, so all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now for item 73, which is B-Dubs, LLC, Buffalo Wild Wings, 715 Mountain View Road for retail on-sale liquor license. Amanda Scott?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, second by Jerry Wright and Darla Drew. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and that takes us down to item 149, under staff items, which is to approve resolution 2016-088, acknowledging correction to the October 3, 2016 city council minutes. Amanda Scott?
I'd like to make a motion to approve and retain the floor.
Okay, second by Darla Drew, and you have the floor.
Thank you. May I ask a quick question for clarification to the Chief Financial Officer?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Pauline, in reviewing this, it looks like it's short and sweet. It's just a correction of a description?
That is correct. Their first resolution, that came before the council, they gave us the wrong information. So we have to correct that?
Thank you. Yield the floor, Mayor.
Okay, motion is for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to public hearing items, items 150 through 155. There are no speaker request forms. Takes us on to consent public hearing items, items 150 through 153. And I would ask if the council wants to pull any of these, and I know that someone wants to pull item 153. Is that you, Richie? Okay, so could use a motion to approve items 150 through 152. Brad?
Make motion to approve items 150 through 152.
I second a motion.
Okay, second by Jason Solomon. Alderman Nordstrom, are you still waiting to talk?
No.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve 150 through 152. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to item 153, approved resolution 2016-070B as in boy, a resolution levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property, and go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. We need to continue this item, if I may make that as a motion, to the next city council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to continue to the next city council meeting. Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Alderman Nordstrom to answer the question why we're continuing this?
I think you can.
We'll wait for the green light to come on. I'm going to yield to the city finance officer. I think there's some discrepancies in the timing on this and the date that needs to be assigned, so I will yield to the city finance officer.
Okay, we'll go to Pauline Sumption then.
Thank you. We just jumped the gun on this one. It was supposed to be on the next council meeting, and we missed it, so...
Okay.
So just a follow-up question to the Chief Financial Officer?
Yes.
So Pauline, when you say you just jumped the gun on it, but it's going to the next city council, it's bypassing legal and finance?
It went to legal and finance on Wednesday, which is fine, in all honesty. The public hearing, though, was actually scheduled for the 21st, and so that way, if anybody wants to come and speak on it, they can still come at the 21st meeting.
All right. Thank you for the explanation, clarification. If you still need a second, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second to continue this to the next city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to non-consent public hearing items, item number 154. We'll go back to John Roberts for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 154, second reading ordinance 6144, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Wiss Associates, Incorporated, for watershed development, LLC for rezoning from no-use district to low-density residential district two for property generally described as being located northwest of the intersection of Poppy Trail and Dunsmore Road, and I recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Steve Lorenti. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item 155, please.
Number 155, second reading ordinance 6145, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions, Incorporated, for Hague Brothers, LLC for rezoning from general commercial district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located north of Samus Trails, and I recommend approval.
Second.
Second.
Second by Steve Lorenti, and all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Now it seems to be a good time to take a recess for 45 minutes?
No.
Okay, we'll go on then to item 156, which is the bill list, and we'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at
Okay, I recommend approval.
Second.
Who said that? Motion. Oh, John. Motion by Roberts, second by Lorenti, I think, and all in favor of the bill list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Brad Estes?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a couple seconds to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
That's...